Hi, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. We're just coming out of an executive session, so actually, we're not that late tonight. It's pretty good. So apologize for the late start, and we open all our meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to share the reading of the mission statement. "The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." At this time, is there anyone in studio or on Zoom who would like to share their public comments? Is there anyone on Zoom? I'm seeing none. Okay. We have a student with us tonight, Ms. Vanessa. Welcome. Thank you for joining us in person.
Oh, okay. So I have some updates for tonight for academics. We are into the second quarter of the school year, which started this week. Fall conferences will be had.
Vanessa, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Sorry.
Can you, would you mind speaking into the microphone? Because I think they might have difficulty picking it up. I just want to make sure everyone can hear you.
Yep.
Thanks so much.
Um, fall conferences will be held on Thursday from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And report cards will be posted on Monday, November 20th in Power School for athletics, visual, and performing arts. The theater department has been working hard all fall. On Disney's Descendants, the musical, with shows this Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. On Sunday, November 5th, for the first time in school's history, the Warrior Marching Band won five caption awards in Division V for best music, visual effect, color guard, and percussion. The Wakefield Warrior Marching Band won Division V at Nezba Championships, receiving a platinum medal with a score of 95.69. The previous week, the band traveled to Rutgers University and competed against 19 other marching bands from around the country. The band placed in the top 12 during the preliminaries, and after performing again at finals on the same day, they finished 10th overall. Then they drove home overnight from New Jersey and competed at the Massachusetts State Championships, where they received a perfect score and a gold medal at state finals. For other news at the school, the Powder Puff Game was this last Wednesday. Congratulations to all the juniors who won. The pep rally is next Wednesday during school. The whole school will celebrate all of the fall athletic accomplishments and enjoy performances by the dance team, cheer team, and marching band. In addition to the annual tug-of-war competition to see which classes will be the champions, we are also adding in the junior class fundraiser, where teachers and administrators volunteered to get pied in the face. It should be a great event for the whole school.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Vanessa?
Thank you.
No, seeing none. Thank you. Do we have a consent agenda?
We do. Move that the school committee entered, yeah, oh, sorry, wrong one. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the October 24th, 2023 school committee meeting and accept the minutes of the October 30th, 2023 school committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting as presented. Second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? None opposed. It passes unanimously. Thank you. We have Christine. Hi, Christine, on the budget items.
Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight in your packet, you have the financial reports through October 31st, 2023. And as you can see, we have salaries encumbered through the year for all of our active staff. We still have a few vacancies on our website. We've encumbered for our purchase orders, but we still have quite a bit of spending to do as we're only through October. But we have an available budget of about 12% remaining to carry us through the year. So we're in good shape for our local appropriation. And on the other page, you'll see our grants are all in. All of our entitlement grants are in through October. We have encumbered all of our SIR III money. As you'll know, this is the last of our SIR grants from the COVID Relief Grant. So we've encumbered that to cover some of our paraprofessional salaries. The last page of the packet has the revolving accounts. And as you can see, we are spending down those programs as we're in full swing. And we got our first circuit breaker, which came at the beginning of October. It was about $320,000. We get that quarterly. So those are the financial reports. Does anyone have any questions through October 31st?
I just have a quick question, Christine. On the one that has the grants on it, it says it's through October 31st, but the balances are August and September. Are they the September and October balances, but maybe the column descriptions didn't get updated, or?
I just didn't change the dates.
Okay, perfect.
Right? The titles. Thanks, Pete.
Any other questions for Christine? No.
And I think Pete's coming in on Thursday to sign bills, as he does probably twice a month. So thanks, Pete. We just have our payrolls to be approved for the month of October.
Move that the school committee approve payroll warrants number 16 and number 18 as presented. Second.
Uh, motions have been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? None opposed. It passes unanimously. I don't, I don't see any gifts. Do you have anything else, Christine?
Well, that's it. If anyone has any questions, they can reach out to me on email as well. But thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christine.
So all the floor is yours, Dr. Lyons.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to start off by welcoming Will Cavanaris, who's here with us via Zoom this evening with a few students from the Fall Musical, he's, which is Disney's Descendants, which he's going to talk a little bit about. Will, are you with us? Not yet? Okay.
I mean, we're running really early.
Yeah, so we can, we can check back there. So Vanessa already mentioned the marching band competition, which is the Sunday before last, November 5th. It was a Sunday evening. It was a cold night. I had the good fortune to be there with Amy McLeod and to watch the kids win the championship. And so it was really, really an exceptional competition. The kids competed just better than anyone else, right? And so they were, their precision, their quickness. It was just really done so well. There were, there were groups there in different divisions that had larger bands, more kids, but they just were not as precise, not as well-coached. And Tom Banker and his team are really quite good at this. And so we're going to welcome them to our next school committee meeting. And he's going to be able to talk about the event, and the kids will share a little bit about their experience. I can tell you, at the end of the event, all the kids were in the middle of the field. They kind of congregated, and Tom gave out their medals, right? Which they don't usually do, but the kids wanted to do it. And they're such a tight-knit group, right? You know, the kids, before everyone got their medal, you know, everyone's chanting each other's name because they, they all know one another, and they all just really competed so well. So we're looking forward to welcoming them in our next meeting.
Are they going to bring their instruments?
That'd be great, wouldn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, that would be great. And so also, I would be remiss if I didn't mention athletics. Right now, we have two teams in the state tournament. We have volleyball. It's competing this evening at 6:00 p.m., so we're an hour fifteen into the competition. I haven't got a text yet to see how they're doing, but I'm sure we'll hear hopefully by the end of the meeting. And then tomorrow, we have soccer. So both teams are in the final four, so they're in the quarterfinals. If soccer advances, I think the championship game is going to be Saturday. And in the other bracket, on the other side of the final four is Melrose.
Yeah.
So it would be great to have Melrose-Wakefield with a Wakefield victory, of course. But that will give me something to call the superintendent about over there, talk about. Anyway, I can kind of jump back to our beginning, which is, I see Will is, has joined us. Good evening, Will.
Hi, everybody. How are you?
Hi, Will.
Do you have some students with you tonight?
I don't. So we're currently in a queue. We're there all on stage, so I'm alone in the Galvin hallway. They look forward to seeing all of you this weekend at Descendants.
Great.
Looking forward to it.
Great. Can you tell us a little bit about it?
Sure. So Descendants is about all of the villains from Disney movies of yesteryear. They have, they've had children, and this is their story. So this is about how the villains' children and the heroes' children all come together and find that they can live in harmony. A little spoiler alert for the end of the show. Ninety minutes. We're adding an intermission for a little break in between, so about 100 minutes total. Friday and Saturday at 7:00 at the Galvin, and Sunday at 2:00 also at the Galvin. Sunday is selling very well. I think we will sell out this weekend, so that's super exciting. So if you don't have tickets yet, I would go to wakefieldtheater.org and purchase your tickets.
So I'm curious, since this is a Disney production, do you have to ask Disney to use it? You do?
Yeah, so all royalties are, this is being presented with permission from Music Theater International, who has the royalties for Disney. So yeah, so it all goes through there. So a big chunk of our production cost goes to royalties, but also costumes, which all of our students designed and built. We have scenic, we worked with a Gunquit Playhouse to get real professionals working with our students, so that's always exciting. And then we're using projections for the first time, which is also exciting.
Will, are there any dogs this year?
No dogs this year. However, Nessa, who is our star in Wizard of Oz, is in Cambridge. If you head down the street for a production of Legally Blonde, so if you want to see that, it's at Moonbox Productions.
Yes. Does anyone have any questions for Will?
No, it looks like you're doing.
Sorry that my stars couldn't join us tonight. They are on stage right now. And their director runs a tight ship around here, so.
No, well, thank you for coming.
I hope to see all of you later.
Thanks for joining us, Will.
Bye-bye.
Bye, guys.
It is selling out fast.
Yeah?
Yes, the whole weekend, so.
I bet it is. It always does, and the kids do such a nice job. Next up, we, we welcome Erin Manzi, who's going to talk about the Bartholona trip. Is Erin with us? If not, we can.
I am, no, I am here, but you can't see me.
No? We don't see anything right now.
I wonder if it's possible. Let's check with Ian. Any feedback from Ian? No video?
It says, it says my video is on. I can see you clearly and hear everything clearly, but.
No, our screen is just blank.
Yeah.
But we can hear you.
Yeah, that's what I can see too. Let me just see.
There's a presentation that she, oh, we're back.
So I, I thought he had you for a minute. Ian, do you have the slide deck?
Do you want to talk about CPAC while we are?
Yeah. So Erin, while we're.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay. I don't think it's you. I think it's, we have a little bit of a glitch here.
I don't know, as far as we can tell, Zoom says she doesn't have a camera.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to work on that. I apologize, and let me.
Only Jeff was there.
Yeah. You know what, Erin? Is it okay to check back with you in a minute?
Absolutely. I'm, I'll still be here. I'm welcome.
Great. Thanks so much.
Let me check.
Just other updates. So CPAC has two upcoming meetings. On November 15th, there's a meet and greet, which is tomorrow. And 12/6, there's a dessert social. Both are at Galvin Middle School at 7:00 p.m. It's a great opportunity to get out and, and meet the leaders of CPAC. CPAC is the Special Education Parent Advisory, and so it's, it's actually an amazing group. And they are just a terrific resource and have become really great partners for us in the Wakefield Public Schools and also for Rosie Galvin in Special Education.
And the meet and greet, I think I attended last year. It's not just CPAC. It's, there's district folks that are there, right?
Rosie will be there as well.
And it's not just Rosie. It's also, like, when I was there, there was at least a number of different sort of adjustment counselors and Rosie and, and so it was sort of people that could answer questions. The CPAC are the people that sort of know how to sort of ask the right questions and sort of know what people mean when they have questions.
Yeah.
Help frame it in a good framework. Just can't say enough good things. Again, I always say this, people think that their needs don't raise to a certain level that they think they need to outreach to CPAC. Can't say it enough, if your student accesses any additional supplements, you should talk to CPAC. They're just outstanding in the field and can navigate something that can be confusing and overwhelming in any regard, at any level. So just lots of good things to say about them, and this, this meet and greet specifically.
Great, great. Erin, we got you. That's terrific.
Now I have this blurry background. I don't, I don't know what's going on.
I think it's terrific. I, let's check on the slide deck.
Okay. Oh, goodness. I look bizarre.
But, but in a minute, we'll only see the side deck.
I'd like to change it, but I'm not going to mess with anything.
You look fine. Your room's a little weird. Very Wonka-esque.
She's in a museum.
I was playing with this, and I hit blurred background. I was trying to be fancy like Will. That's what I was trying to do.
At least you're not a cat.
That is true. It could happen.
There you go. Your first slide is up.
Okay, so therefore, I can't see those slides. It's over.
So it's just the dates, April 17th to the 24th, 2025 passports.
Okay, awesome. Here I am. Okay, great. So thank you so much for having me. Glad I finally made it. So I am here tonight. So first of all, Erin Manzi, I'm the World Language Coordinator, grades five through 12. And I am here tonight to present and request approval for our trip to Paris and Barcelona in April of 2025. Can I go to the next slide, please? So the students that would have the opportunity to register for this fabulous trip would be the students, our world language students, from the classes of 25 and 26, who are our current sophomores and juniors, which would then be juniors and seniors. The trip would run from Thursday, April 17th, which is the Thursday before April vacation, through Thursday, April 24th, which is the Thursday during April vacation. We will be spending three days in Paris and three days in Barcelona. We'll be using the same tour company that we used in the past. Passports, which we've had a lot of success, and I'll talk a little bit about that later on in the, in the slides. The final cost for the trip is $4,298. There is a early registration discount if students register before December 15th, which is $4,048. Please go to the next slide. So important dates and process over the next year and a half. If the trip is approved for tonight, we will open registration on Monday, November 20th. That's when registration begins. I will have a parent Zoom meeting and student meeting also, if students would like to attend on Tuesday, November 28th, the Tuesday after Thanksgiving, to go over details, itinerary, payment costs for parents. I will also have a representative from passports that night to answer any questions that I may not be able to answer during that time. Early registration ends on December 15th, and the final registration ends on June 1st, 2024. Just so we can get an idea of how many students are interested, how many students will be going on the trip, really finalize some of those details before we head for summer vacation. Through the fall and spring of 2024 and 2025, we'll have many student and parent meetings just to keep in communication with students, make sure they have their passports updated, they're uploading them to the portal, talk about packing, protocols when we're on the trip as the year goes on. And if everything goes well, we will be off on April 17th through the 24th for travel. Next slide, please. Educational objectives. I can't say enough about the benefits of educational travel for students, especially international travel for students. They are able to acquire global skills and perspectives, gain confidence in new, different cultural and social settings, step out of their comfort zone, step out of Wakefield, Massachusetts, and experience other languages, cultures, customs. It's really such a wonderful experience for them. And most of all, I really feel it's so important for them to gain these experiences to then promote global awareness, promote language learning, and respect for other cultures, and carry that, that experience back here and to others in their community. I was able to go on this trip with our students this past April, and experiencing it with them was, was unbelievable for me as an educator and a mom. My daughter was able to go on the trip, and I look forward to continuing that experience for more, more students in our school system. Next slide, please. Why passports? So we've used passports in the past for Italy and Greece, for this past trip to Paris and Barcelona in April. And I can't say enough about their experience, the safety they provide, the peace of mind they provide for students, chaperones, and I feel administration in general. It's been around since 1992, so they've had years of experience. All, all flights, meals, accommodations are all high-quality, essentially located. They feed us very well when we're there. We have a bilingual, full-time passport director just for us the whole time that we are traveling. The ratio from chaperones to students is one to six, which is a very low ratio, which keeps those numbers really, really small, so you can really connect with the students. And they have someone to go to at all times. They cover medical baggage loss coverage. There is always someone to call 24 hours a day while you're there. We actually had a little glitch in one of our rooms when we were in Paris this part, this past time that was resolved very quickly. But that night, the president of passports called me just to make sure everything was okay, that everything was worked out, and just to have someone there that to call at any time really makes you feel that much more supported during the trip. And go to the next slide, please. Just, I'm not going to go into all the details of the trip. It is, if you can take a look at it, is jam-packed from the day we land in Paris to the day that we leave Barcelona. Again, we'll be in Paris for three days. We, that first day, we're in a tour, directed and led walking tour around Paris. That second day, we take the train to the Palace of Versailles, which the students can experience the Hall of Mirrors, which is absolutely gorgeous. This is photoshopped near Notre Dame Cathedral. I'm not sure. It may be open by that time. We got there, we weren't able to go into the cathedral this past time due to the fire, but I'm hoping that it might be open by the next time we go. It should be opening, I believe, for the Olympics next summer. Gorgeous, delicious crepe dinner that night. The next day, last time, we, we visited just the Louvre, which is, it's a beautiful museum, but very overwhelming for students. So we're actually going to give the students a choice. They can visit the Louvre or the Musée d'Orsay, which is a smaller museum, just as beautiful, with so much, like so many beautiful artworks. But we think that we're going to give the students a choice this time. I don't think they'll be able to do both. Not, we're a little tight on that day because later on that day, they're going to take a dinner cruise on the Seine River. And then we added the Eiffel Tower, which students were able to experience the Eiffel Tower by looking at it last time, but we did not ascend into the Eiffel Tower, which we're going to this time. Traveling to Barcelona that night, we will land in Barcelona, sorry, the next morning. We will take a walking tour around Las Ramblas, tapas dinner, flamenco show that night, visit Parkwell, Sagrada Familia, which was designed and created by Antonio Gaudí, paella dinner. And that last is actually my favorite, that the students are able to take a walking tour around the Bocaria Food Market, which is this beautiful outside market, with a local chef from Barcelona. They pick out local foods and ingredients and actually go back to a state-of-the-art kitchen and make the food. So they bring back from the cutting of the onions and the, and the tomatoes to peeling of shrimp. They make paella, tortilla española. It's a beautiful day. Just to really watch them work together in, in the kitchens to create a gorgeous local meal and eat it together. That afternoon, we will take the cable car to, which is a cable car above Barcelona, which is a beautiful view, over to the beach, where we'll have our final dinner that night. So there's a lot. It is, it's definitely a, a trip for students who like to be on the go. There's a lot of walking, a lot of interactions with so many different pieces of art and food. But it's definitely jam-packed, so you have to put, put your good walking shoes on and get ready for a great experience. And go to the next slide. So what's included? So a round-trip transportation is included. The accommodations are centrally located, three to four star hotels. All breakfasts and dinners are included. Students are on their own for lunch, which they really enjoy choosing something on their own during that time. We will have a tour director with us throughout the whole trip. Entrances and activities that are on the itinerary are all included. And there is a travel protection plan that includes coverage for trip interruption, trip delay, baggage loss, medical expenses for emergencies, and evacuations. And the next slide, please. What students are responsible for, they are responsible for getting their passports. They do not need a visa, although it says it here, just a passport. Excess baggage fees, which they should not have. Actually, I think one of the best skills that we teach students is how to minimize their packing. They were really nervous about it. They, they said it was impossible to only use one piece of luggage in a backpack, but we did it. It actually really makes them think about what they really need during this time. And we go over that pretty thoroughly with them. Any unscheduled activities, which we won't have, or any meals that they want above and beyond, what we provide for them, and souvenirs and gifts. And next slide, please. So again, the cost breakdown. Our departure is April 17th. We will leave out of Boston to Paris and then to Barcelona, Barcelona back to Boston. The whole cost is $4,298 with a 250 early enrollment discount before December 15th. There are two different types of payment plans. Parents can pay as they, as they can up until December 28th, but the final payment is due on that. Or they can choose the easy payment plan, which money comes out automatically, and that last payment is due March 18th. So there are two different types of payment plans parents can choose. And next slide, please. So there, and again, there are two different types of protection plans. So what is included is on my left-hand side, trip interruptions, trip delays, baggage delays, emergency medical expenses, emergency medical evacuation, 24-hour travel assistance. baggage delays, emergency medical expenses, emergency medical evacuation, twenty-four-hour travel assistance and concierge. Parents can purchase an additional protection plan for two hundred dollars, which is called the peace of mind plan. And in that plan, parents or students can cancel for any reason. And that provides up to seventy-five percent of the total tour costs. And parents can or students can cancel up to prior to two days before our departure date. And last slide, please. And yeah, this is just, these are some links. There's a parent informational letter, the company website. We have students sign, read and sign a code of conduct before they go, the itinerary and Google Classroom that we already have set up for students at this point. So if the trip is approved tonight, I will send this information to Amy McLeod. Amy will put it out in the parent communication on Sunday night, the Sunday night coming up. So parents and students are able to look at the information, make a decision and really start registering at that point. And like I said previously, I'll have a parent meeting, parent-student meeting the following Tuesday to answer any questions, concerns, go through itinerary costs with a passport representative the following Tuesday. And I think that's about it. So I'd like to open it up with any questions that you may have.
Aaron, thanks. This is pretty exciting and a pretty amazing opportunity for the students. I'll ask the question asked for all of these trips and it's kind of rhetorical. For for families that are struggling financially, is there any financial aid available for them?
At the current time, there isn't, but I'm definitely open to working with any students to looking at any type of fundraiser. I would support students and anything like that if they're looking to go. We could be creative and really think about how. I realize the cost is expensive for for most families. And I think people think that I'm crazy that I presented this early. It's only November and it's not till twenty twenty-five, but for the reason being that I want to try to make it as affordable as possible for families that it's spread out, two hundred dollars a month is still a decent amount of money, I realize. But I think giving parents the heads up that this is coming, students, many students in our junior senior year do work during the year, work during the summertime, so really gives them that chance to think ahead if this is something that they like to do to save some money.
Then my second question is, do you do you struggle picking which faculty members to bring with you on the trip? Because I assume there could be like a competition on who wants to help chaperone this one?
There is always a competition. There is always people sliding me some notes like on my desk in my office to saying like, just keep me in mind. This one isn't as bad as the Italy-Greece one. That is, that can become a little heated, I'm not gonna lie.
Do most of our world language teachers?
There's a waiting list for that one.
Do do most of our world language teachers choose to go on these trips or?
It's really a combination. So last year, Kelly Bryson and Bridget Reed joined us along with Amy McLeod. But Pat Brennan also came, Craig Winkler joined us, and I feel like I'm forgetting someone. I hope not forgetting. So I really, it's a great combination of world language teachers, English teachers, art teachers. And I I think it's really nice to see that it's not just world language teachers that really supporting educational travel. It's all teachers in our school. Granted, they get to go on a fabulous trip, but I think that you still need to be in support of programs like this to want to go, which is really nice.
And then I have one last question from last year. How many students ended up joining you last year?
We had forty-two students. We had forty-two students travel to Paris and Barcelona. And we actually have fifty students going to Italy and Greece in April. It's a tremendous turnout, much more than I ever imagined when I started this two years ago, which is great. Which is great that that many students really have that itch to travel and see the world, which is really nice.
Awesome, thank you.
Is there a maximum that you could take?
So. There really isn't. I really don't want to turn away students. But at the same time, I think for safety reasons and really being able to book hotels, book restaurants, travel in the coach. We really, fifty was our cutoff this past time for Italy and Greece. We had to start a start a waitlist at that. And we really feel that that is a doable number to travel with such a large group within two different countries. Actually, three countries, the United States, to Italy, to Greece. We felt that that was a safe number with the chaperones, even though it is, no matter what, it's a one to six ratio, you know, for chaperones and for for students, but at the same time, I think really just trying to travel with more than that gets a little dicey. Dicey, just a little overwhelming, I guess the word is, might be.
Does anyone have any questions, Karen? No, do we have a motion? We have to approve international travel.
We do. Yeah, we can do that. Move that the school committee approve the travel for world language students from the Wakefield Memorial High School classes of twenty twenty-five and twenty-six to Paris and Barcelona for April seventeenth to April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, as presented second.
A motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? There are none opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Aaron. It was great, yeah. You have to come back. Let us know how it was.
I definitely will.
Send us postcards.
I appreciate your support, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night, thank you.
Did they send you postcards in April?
I didn't get postcards, but you know.
I'll send, I'll send one this year.
But it's, what's interesting is that you can see in in Aaron's presentation how excited she is, right? And and this is, you know, the excitement is contagious, right? And so it it transfers to adults, it transfers to kids. It's really just a terrific opportunity for kids and for this past April, Amy McLeod made the trip. And I think she would argue it was one of the best things that she did last year, you know, and just getting back to, you know, the work, being close to kids and and so this is gonna be good. This is gonna be a great trip.
Aaron, can I just ask one curious question? Is what's the, what is sort of the the dynamic between the French language students and Spanish language students when they're placed in those individual countries? Because for one set, they're gonna be in the language they've been learning and then the other one, they might as well be in, you know, learning Latin.
No, I know, I think it's great. I think it's really for them to learn from each other. I think that.
Oh, that's great.
Seeing them, it's really, I think groups are intermingled, so it's not when we have making groups of six students. We don't just have, you know, sometimes it works out the way, really just depends, but usually they're with their friends group, so they could have Spanish students and French students within a group and really watch them help each other out with the language when they're where they're in each other, each other's country, I guess, each other's countries of, you know, choice is really, really nice. Or more so even the language piece, but the cultural piece, that it's so much more, not just about the language, but the French students knowing about more of like the French artists or some of like the French architecture that you'll see or vice versa, of like the student, the Spanish students teaching some of the French students about some of the authentic foods that they're making, because they've learned about that. So watching that dynamics between the two of them is is amazing. But we also have Latin Italian students that come on the trip too. So it's not just open to the French and Italian students. But I really think I love see, like seeing them talk about their knowledge that they already know. It almost showed off a little bit, you know, for each other is really, really nice.
That sounds so fun.
My Wakefield High School, middle and high school French got me through Paris last year. So I was actually able to remember quite a bit and brushed up a little bit for Duolingo, so go Wakefield High School, because I got around Paris with no problem.
It's great.
Aaron, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Much appreciated. Yeah, we are really fortunate to have Aaron in the position that she is. And we can talk more about the world language curriculum at another time, but, you know, she's really, I would argue, just reinvented this entire department, you know. I don't, you know, I don't know if I think that's fair to say.
Absolutely. Yeah, she's done an amazing job. And and just to prepare the committee, we we've been talking and planning. We'll we'll be up again for a world language curriculum review next school year, so there'll be more updates to come. She's done an excellent job.
Yeah, yeah. And so again, like I said, it's just contagious, everything she's a part of. So just other updates, Kara and I this past week worked with the Wakefield Education Foundation in reviewing grants. There we got, there were about thirty-eight grants roughly seeking about sixty thousand dollars in support or a little over sixty-five thousand dollars in support. The budget that the Wakefield Education Foundation raises to fund the grants are about forty thousand dollars. And and they try to give, they try to help every person that applies for something, right? So their their goal is to try to support in some way, right? And so, but Melissa Holmes and Carrie Mazzone are just, I think, great partners for us and they're part of the fabric of the community and they're just really, just killing it. They are just really doing such a great job. We're also collaborating with them and planning the celebration of learning in the spring, which is April?
April tenth.
April tenth. And so there'll be more information forthcoming on that. But that's just a quick update and we'll also have kind of an update on on the awardees and what the grants are and all that business. But that's a piece. Next, I'd like to welcome Jeff Weiner up to the table to talk a little bit about a technology update and where we are in the district with all of the things that he has going.
Jeffrey has a copy of it. He had a copy of the tech plan, I think.
I think he'll.
There it is, all right. Okay, I have it too, I need that. All right, well, thank you again. With a, just a quick technology update for a few things and then I'll I'll talk about the tech plan for a minute and then our recent cybersecurity assessment that we just did, which is great. It was the technology support help desk, I came in last, the the end of the last school year. I talked about the our kind of pilot help desk that we wanted to start and try out and happy to report that it's the feedback I've received is it's significantly improved support, which is great. So we're hoping to continue that. It's it's, we started with at the beginning of the school year and it helped the tech department. I think it helped teachers to be able to email, call, walk in, text, as opposed to just sending in a ticket through email. So right now it's supported by IT staff Monday through Thursday, seven-thirty to noon, so so it's great. We're excited about that. The, yeah, there you go, sorry. The, we have a new iPad program that we've moved over to. Our iPads inventory has gone from probably twenty to twenty-five iPads to about a hundred and twenty-something now. We're in the hundred and twenties. So and all this, mostly in support of special education. So we had to move from our free, like, kind of the the free system that we use to manage iPads over to a a more complicated system, but it also gives us more flexibility. So it allows people to add apps themselves. Sometimes it allows a lot more robust management of apps. So it's it's a better program, it's a better system, I think. And we're trying to move everything over to it right now. So it's a, it's a little bit of a, in a challenge spot right now, but it's a, when we finish it, it's gonna be great for everybody. I think it'll significantly improve that service as well. So I'm gonna talk about more in depth the technology plan and our cybersecurity assessment. If you want to go to the next slide, please. The technology plan was developed with input and feedback from various stakeholders. We had teachers, we had students, our curriculum coordinators, technology staff and school administrators all took a look at it. I'd like to thank Diana Ho, the library media specialist at the high school for for working with me to create the first draft that we brought to everybody else and collect collect that group of stakeholders to kind of look at it. It was awesome. Next slide. Our areas of focus for the tech plan are student experience, we have teacher experience, community engagement and operations management. It's similar to what we had before, we just went through it and and kind of revamped it all.
Jeff, I think you gotta switch slides.
What's that?
I don't think he has the clicker.
I know, but if you just tell him next slide.
Oh, I did, next slide, actually go to now.
There you go. That we, that's where you want to be, correct?
No, one more. The student experience piece, we have, we have three areas that we're looking at. Digital equity and access for all students, with the goal is to ensure that every student, regardless of socioeconomic background, has equitable access to digital resources and technology tools. Seamless integration of educational technology is the goal of fostering a learning environment where educational technology is seamlessly integrated into the curriculum to enhance student engagement and achievement. And then we have a data-driven decision-making for continuous improvement as an area to utilize data analytics and insights to inform decision-making, personalized learning and improve educational outcomes for students. And in the packet, and we'll be on the website too, the whole plan, which has all that, some action items as well, but I don't want to read through everything today. Next slide, please. Teacher experience, we're focused on professional development and training, providing comprehensive professional development and training opportunities to empower teachers with skills and knowledge to integrate technology into their teaching effectively. We have collaboration and resource sharing, foster collaborative community among teachers, enabling them to share knowledge, resources and innovative teaching strategies related to technology integration. That was something we touched on several years ago where if a teacher's using a tool or using kind of had an experience, they can share it with other teachers and it kind of grows that. So it's not just a little pocket of someone using something that works really well, that's great. And then of course, we want responsive technical support, ensuring teachers receive timely and effective technical support to resolve issues related to hardware, software and online platforms. And so that's something, again, that the help desk has been really beneficial for us and making better already, and we just want to continue to improve that as much as possible. Next slide. Under community engagement, we have digital literacy and parent slash community training, empowering parents and community members with digital literacy skills to support students' technology-driven education. Transparency and communication is a focus, promoting transparency and communication between the IT department and the community, ensuring stakeholders are informed and engaged in technology-related decisions and also community collaboration with technology initiatives, which goal is collaborate with community organizations and local businesses to support technology initiatives that benefit both the school district and the community. Next slide. And operations management is the final piece, is optimizing IT infrastructure and resource management, efficiently management, managing IT infrastructure and resources to ensure reliability, scalability and cost effectiveness. Disaster recovery planning, which is something I'll talk about in a minute, as part of the cybersecurity as well. Establishing a comprehensive disaster recovery plan to minimize disruptions and maintain continuous IT operations in case of unforeseen incidents. And then there's enhancing data security and privacy compliance, which I left as last, because it's gonna feed into the next part. Strengthen data and infrastructure security measures to ensure compliance with the Center for Internet Security safeguards to mitigate the most prevalent cyber attacks against systems and networks and to ensure data protection. And that one's a big one, because we're hearing all about that in the news lately. So so that led us to the cybersecurity assessment that we talked about at the end of last year that we were gonna do this year, which we've completed now the assessment and have received recommendations, so I'll talk about that a little bit right now without going too deep into the recommendations and what we need to work on. So the cybersecurity assessment, we had interviews conducted September through October with technology staff and a security company that we worked with, a third-party company, to determine our compliance, our current compliance with the Center for Internet Security's controls. There's a list of eighteen controls that, there's a slide in here that kind of shows them briefly, so you can see kind of what what the areas of focus were for that. Our critical systems were all scanned and evaluated for vulnerabilities. We did external scans and and penetration testing. We did internal scans of systems to see where we might be vulnerable, where we weren't, we were, we were doing well. We reviewed policy documents and created probably thirteen new ones that we're still, still in the middle of working on. Because we have policies around cybersecurity, we have in data protection, but they're not all written. So that was one of the, one of the things that the assessment brought out, is that they want them to comply with the assessment, they want them written. Recommendations were made over for safeguards of critical systems. And then a two to three-year roadmap was calculated for the district in order of importance based on the level of risk, the impact on the district's mission and the cost of the development programs to remediate the risks. So it kind of all balanced out to find the top risks that we could, that we should work on first. Next slide, please. So this is just a list of the eighteen controls, I won't read every single one of them, but it's things like data protection and email and web browser and audit log management stuff like that, access to systems, controls and penetration testing. So there's a whole bunch of stuff that, under each one of these, there was additional things to look at. There was probably three or four other items to look at for each control and they tested against all of that. So I didn't, but again, I don't want to go through every single one of them, but there was a lot of, a lot to look at, which was great. We learned a lot, we found out a lot, which is very helpful. Next slide, please. So some of the common risks for schools, instead of talking about where we might, the areas we might be working on specifically, talk about some of the common security risks for schools. Phishing, ransomware and social engineering, huge, like the, the, the risk we have with people not understanding what to click on, what not to click on, what, what systems to use, what to install, just that's a, that's really, really gonna be important for us to educate employees about security threats. And implementing a training program to enhance security awareness, I think that's something everybody needs to do. And it's not, I had a question earlier, like this, so you do this every year? You don't do it every year, you do it once and you continuously do it, you don't stop. It's not something that you do this year, next year, the next year. It's just something you do, you, you implement and then you keep going with it. So we also want to, people wanna look, you wanna look at third-party vendors and service providers. We know our systems, what our systems look like, but you don't know what your third-party vendors' systems look like. So that's another thing we need to do, is risks associated with, find out risks associated with third-party vendors. Establish vendor security assessments, manage relationships with your security providers, you know? So they're not just, oh, they, they do this for us, like we work together and do that instead. Ensuring providers adhere to security standards themselves because your security is only as good as theirs when they have your, your information. Next slide, please. A couple more, incident readiness and response management, preparing for potential security incidents, establishing response plans and a response team for cybersecurity attacks and things like that, conducting regular testing and vulnerability assessments. You know, that's one of the things that you, it's one of those continuous things, it's, you can't just do it once. You have to keep going with it. And then protecting your data, it's always been important, it remains important, ensuring the protection of sensitive data, implementing encryption and access controls and, and data masking techniques when you need to. Things like nurses laptops or administrators laptops, you know, should have encryption so they, if the laptop gets lost or stolen, somebody can't just pull the hard drive out and get all your data. So things like that is really what we looked at for this, for the assessment. Next slide, please. And just a summary of that, awareness is key, like the key thing. Ensuring school staff members are aware of risks to make informed decisions, taking proactive measures, implementing robust security protocols and training to mitigate threats and collaborative defense, fostering a team-oriented approach to protect our organization against all cyber threats. That's kind of where we are. That's all I have for, any questions?
Go ahead, Pete.
Jeff, one of the areas where I had asked about early on in the year, and it sounded like we had made some progress on it, but I don't think it was in your presentation, are the things we're doing to make information more accessible to families. So I know one area that I heard about recently was apparently like report cards. I don't know if this is just starting at, at some schools. Well, for families that have trouble getting to power school, they'll have a way to access it directly via their email. The other area where I thought we were making some progress, maybe I imagined this, was with some of the assessment reports and having a way for families to access those electronically and not have to go dig through a bag to go find that buried. And if, didn't know if any of that work is being done out of your department or if there's other teams in the school that are working on it.
Yeah, I think you, you touch on a couple things and I think.
Yeah, I can speak to, we've been working with Jeff and the curriculum coordinator team looking at how to get iReady reports home digitally, which I think we made pretty good progress last year. I checked in with Lindsay, that we found a way that we'd be able to send those digitally, which was a problem last year. And we've just actually sent out our first round of DIBELS screening information to parents and held information, informational session for kindergarten parents just on what the DIBELS screening assessment looks like.
Was that one electronic? Cause I thought that was just a piece of paper.
That one was not electronic, it was a letter, yeah, so I know we wanna move towards that.
Yeah, I mean definitely anything we can do to help get some of those things more electronic, make them more accessible to families.
Definitely the ideal, for sure.
Just that pieces of paper seem to get lost and so definitely appreciate the hard work you guys are doing to make the information more accessible.
Yeah, we're also collaborating with a data analyst that, that has done some work for us in the past who will be kind of helping us not only assess data, but also share data. So there'll be more information forthcoming on that.
Awesome.
Yep.
The DIBELS was, the way we reported out, Department of Ed had templates of, of parent letters to report the results. So we kind of used that. I have to cross-check if those did go home, cause you're making me cross-check, did it go home in backpack or via email? It did, it was definitely backpack, okay.
Yeah, I got a, oh, paper.
Okay, cause I knew we sent out emails like lookout for this, it's coming home in the backpack, okay. So, alright, so yeah, but ideally, email would be better. No, the DIBELS.
Now, this was a DIBELS thing.
Early screener.
This is the.
Reading comprehension and.
It was just kindergarten or no?
No, it, it was K through, fourth grade, I believe.
I, I got it for a fourth grader.
Oh, okay. Sorry.
I thought it was only K through three too.
Okay.
Got a succeeding expectations.
It was a good step to at least, you know, I know last year we were talking a ton about just getting the information in the hands of paper, in the hands of parents. So I think we're making good strides there and digitally would be the ideal end goal. We can talk more about that, cause DIBELS is brand new this year on M-class.
Stephen?
So I'll, I'll start by saying I think the, the sort of digital literacy component of sort of what you've talked about is, is coming into my house. My kids often, when they talk about, we're not the, we're not exactly looking over their shoulder on every webpage that they're hitting. But if I ask them the question in terms of, well, how'd you find this person? You know, they can talk about, I'm only three clicks in or I'm like this or that, you know, I'm, I'm, I can't use all the lingo, but they're clearly picking it up in library media that like this is how I can, you know, at least put some controls on how they surf the web. And it is such a vast and sort of can turn dark place. It's nice to know that, that they're acquiring some of that knowledge because we don't always have the, the time to teach them every day and be with them, but it's obvious that it's hitting them in the classroom, so you're definitely hidden marks in that space. I had a couple of, of questions about, I know that you have the technology page on the, on the district website and you have some, I've looked at it for like when systems are down, when I couldn't reach my kid's clever account or, you know, what, what wasn't working. Is there something for that for educators, for sort of employees to research app-specific known issues that they have? Can they self-service?
Yeah, some of the apps, like Clever is, is a great example, has their own status page. Google has a status page. We've talked about in the IT department, like collecting the status pages for as many apps as we can and putting them on one page and so everybody can go and look if they want to, instead of having to go, well, what's the status page for Clever? What's the status page for this? If there's an outage, if, if those apps have an outage, I usually send it out to the community, to our teachers and, and, and schools at least, say, here's the status page, this is down because of, if you wanna check and you can check it anytime. But I think it's, it would be worthwhile to have it as a page, just so people can go check, even whether it's in the school or out of the school, just say, these are the services we use here, you can go check the status of. Cause we do get a lot of questions like, oh, I can't get into Clever today. We, we find out that Clever's actually down, so, yeah, not just to pick on Clever, but.
And I know there's, there's a whole host of different applications that, that teachers use across every level of the district. So I know it's a lot to keep, but that's where I'm, I'm thinking if there was a central repository that they could go to instead of having to sort of go out on their own. They just know they come to this page, this is where they can find the answer, sort of thing. And then if that's level one of that, level two of that would be, are we collecting, like the FAQs, the frequently asked questions from our educators, from the teachers to know what are the top ten pain points that they have? What are the common questions and can we then like model what the correction is? And, and put that link, you know, in a SharePoint or something, do a YouTube video, something, to point the teachers, again, taking the weight off of the, the service desk, which I'm sure is feeling probably, I don't even know how many calls, I'm sure they're great at it, but every sort of bit of it that we could make self-service, because it could just be as easy as like you didn't check this box, or you didn't, you know, any, any host of things. And if we could cut down that, those easy things, that low-hanging fruit, I think it would free up some of your resources.
That's also something we talked about as part, we are, we're working like at the very beginning stages of, of developing a new website and that's one of the things that we talked about as, as kind of a knowledge base for that kind of thing. Just trying to find a system that works well with it, that, that's searchable and our help desk collects that information, so we do have it.
Oh, good.
But it's really just something that we only have access to right now, so if we can make that more accessible to other people that can search it, yeah, it would definitely be better. So we did talk about that at the beginning, like right at the beginning stages of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Device security, so I know we, we have sort of our own Chromebooks, the district sort of allows students to use. How do we, how do we know who's using our system? In terms of whether it's an educator, whether it's a student, whether it's a visitor, well, visitors. But how do we know who's in our network?
Like on the physical network or in, like?
Yes, do we have a way to know sort of what devices are on our network and whether they're friendly or not?
Well, we have, I mean, we do have two separate networks for, for wireless networks. When people come, there's, there's the visitor network where people can log in there and then there's students and staff have their, their own space. I think if, it's only as good as the information we, we keep in to ourselves. If people are handing out the passwords for Wi-Fi all, all the day long, you know, we're gonna lose that. So we do change them.
I think that's my question.
So we do change them.
If it wasn't a unified, do we, do we have users use their network credentials, their, their Google passwords to log in to our network so that we know who's?
We don't do that for Wi-Fi, there's, right now, there's, there's a, a key for Wi-Fi. We have looked into that with our, when we switched over, it was like right before COVID, we started looking into that system where you would actually have to use your, your login for the school to get on Wi-Fi.
Yep.
And then there would be like a smaller guest network. Unfortunately, when COVID hit, we pushed that aside to do other things. But, but it's nothing, it's not something we can't look into again.
Okay.
As part of our assessment, that's some of the, some of the things we might have talked about.
Okay, it's, it's nice to know if you're, if something sort of not great happens, it's nice to know where it came from so that you can then even just communicate, somebody might do something accidentally. It'd be just, instead of knowing, instead of not knowing where it came from and not knowing who to communicate to, it'd be nice to be able to go, did you know that maybe this, you were the source of sort of this thing? And be like, oh my goodness, and then provide education.
Yeah, there's, there's definitely recommendations made as part of our assessment to change that.
Okay. And then which would fall into my last question, when you talk about phishing, do you ever do like simulated phishing attacks? Do you ever email staff?
It's gonna be part of our training program for, for, for our cybersecurity training program.
Great.
No, it's great, it's, it's, it's great and it's not a gotcha, you know, it's, somebody clicks on something. Somebody gets an email, they click on something, you wanna know who clicked on it, so you can go over there and educate them. It's not so you can be like, hmm, you did that wrong. You don't want people to feel bad about it, you want them to understand it so they don't do it again.
And I will add, Stephen, the device, even if they're not authenticating with their individual logins, they're not completely anonymous, like they do have MAC addresses or whatever. So Jeff could figure out what staff member came from if he needed to isolate something that was.
Some of the reports you get from Google do give you, give you some information. It's not always enough though to, you know, it's not as much as we want.
No, it's like a tech talk.
I didn't want you to think everyone was anonymous on the network.
Right.
But you can spoof a MAC address.
You can, but, so.
I have no idea what you two are talking about.
I don't either, it's like.
And there are also ways to check that.
Jeff's adding WPA3 enterprise in the future, there we go, we're done.
I know, no, I know it's a lot to manage, you have a lot of sort of unknowns and, and it's not just, it was funny, cause I think about it as being kids and, and no, you're like, but there's also educators that are out there that don't know all the ins and outs and might click on a thing.
Right.
So I appreciate, is that, it is a unwieldy thing to sort of manage.
Yeah, and students are always trying to find a way around it and around the security and around the web content filtering and, and you know, we have to go the other side and try to block that or, and not to block everything because you can't block everything, but, but to really teach them that it's not, just not the best thing to do.
Well, I will go back to where I started and just say that at least sort of what's coming into my house is they are becoming more and more digitally literate. And so that piece of it is absolutely on point, so thank you for all the hard work.
Great, other questions? You don't have a twenty-first question?
There's only three questions in like seven parts, so.
All great questions, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Have a great night.
That's it for me, thank you so much.
Thank you. Do we have a negotiation update since our last meeting?
We do, so, so we continue to meet with teachers. We have a number of, we're, we're not, yeah, so we're, we're not at agreement yet. But we get closer every time we sit down and talk. We've definitely identified sort of what are our main points of, of, not necessarily disagree, but what's important to both sides. We've agreed on a lot of things. We have at least three more meetings on the books, the next meeting will be Friday with WA leadership and hoping for a good outcome. I know that, that it's, there, people are concerned about sort of that the teachers are without a contract. Just in case anyone is curious, teachers are not, not getting paid, they're absolutely getting paid. Whenever we do reach agreement on a contract, they will get paid sort of retroactively back to the start, whatever that delta is on what they earned in the previous contract, what the new contract is. So everything will even out and we just have to get there. And so the days between next contract, every time we meet, we have to wait again till the next time that we meet and the next time that we meet. It's not the easiest thing to do, it's a lot of people in a row, so getting individuals to line up can be a challenge. But we're, we're all there to sort of do the work every time and, and appreciate the partnership on the other side of the table.
And you're meeting again?
Friday.
Friday.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We had Wakefield, we, the Wakefield School Committee attended the, now I'm going into chair comments. Though we attended the Wakefield 101, it was a lovely event. It's for residents, I think, that have moved in within the past year. All different town departments were there. We met some nice people, they had little kids, I don't even think school age yet, right? So we guaranteed the high school will be ready for those students. It was a nice event, it was an hour, was it just an hour or nine minutes? An hour and a half, yeah, lovely. That is all my updates. Subcommittee reports, finance and facilities?
So we have not had a meeting since the last school committee meeting, the last time we had a meeting and there was a report that was in, that was made. We do need to set one in the next couple of weeks, so I'll be doing that.
Thank you. Labor.
Particular topic, I'm sure, will, I'm sorry, of the next meeting will be some of the capital planning pieces, the town's gonna be looking for guidance from us and direction on school facility capital needs, so that'll be the next topic of conversation.
Labor and personnel, Mr. Finkles?
WA negotiations.
Okay, student services, let's call it.
We have a meeting on Thursday at five PM, this coming Thursday. We're continuing the conversation and research on school start times and possibility of Wakefield changing some things around possibly in the year or years to come. So we're still in the research process, I'd say.
We are. Policy and communications?
We have not met since the last school committee, we'll be meeting next Tuesday.
Liaison reports, does anyone have any?
I had the fortune last week to sit in with the, with the youth council in this room. I sat over there for that meeting, they have a lot more people. Great, great group of kids. They were talking about one thing that sort of struck where we could do some, some collaboration or that reaches into the schools, is I think it's, I'm trying to think, Nathan, is it Nathan Chines?
Nathaniel?
Nathaniel?
Oh, does he go by Nate now?
Yeah.
Oh, he does, okay.
I think both, depends, depends if he's in trouble, it's like Nate, right? Yeah. So he is the youth council's liaison with the ESC.
Yes.
And so he is interested in starting up, he's very interested in recycling in schools. Not just recycling, but compost and potentially food, food rescue. We talked a little bit about liaising with, with Tim O'Brien and with Dustin O'Brien, no relation. And then sort of what was happening in that space. And so he's, he's looking to start up his own sort of recycling club at the Galvin, which I mentioned to my fifth grader, he's all in, so we'll see where that goes. And just some, some constructive criticism around things like recycling containers and, and ways of collecting sort of recyclable materials. And it was just interesting to hear from, it wasn't just him, there was also Olivia Wall, I think gave sort of a high school perspective on the, on the topic. And so it was nice to get, I guess, the, the user impression to how easy is it to use these, you have kids that want to recycle. It's not easy for them to do so. And so they're interested in sort of how can we make it easier for them. And so it's not just a school committee thing, it's also coming from the ESC and couldn't fit to sit in on that conversation. Aside from that, their Snow Angels program is coming up and they could use every, everyone's helping sort of recruiting kids to help in the Snow Angels. I think they, I had mistakenly thought that they had trouble enlisting seniors, which I guess that wasn't the problem. The problem was enlisting more kids, so they get some, they can always use more. So if anyone is listening, if you have a student or an able-bodied, you know, child that would like to help out a neighbor.
So if anyone is listening, if you have a, a student or an able-bodied, you know, child that would like to, um, help out a neighbor or maybe somebody a couple of streets, um, over, maybe you reach out to the youth council and see about becoming a, a part of their snow angel program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious, can I ask a question?
Of course.
I'm curious about recycling on the town side, cause I know a number of towns are struggling to recycle like they were able to just a short time ago.
Mm-hmm.
I'm wondering, um, if that's the case here? Do we know?
So, so years ago, we used to get paid for recycling. And then the company that did our recycling ended up going out of business, cause they had all these contracts where they were paying towns to recycle. And then it turned out there was so much recycling that it wasn't a viable business model anymore. So we do pay to do recycling, but the amount we pay is a lot less than if the stuff was, I should say it's less than if it was just going in the trash. Um, I don't know why, I mean, probably a Tim question, why the only thing we recycle at the school is just like cardboard.
Well, at some of the elementary schools, they do do the food rescue and.
Yeah. But those are all big things, parents have helped drive through like PTOs, not just basic recycling.
There's a heavy volunteer component to things like food rescue. And also it does need to go through food services because there is a, uh, like a chain of custody kind of thing that needs that. Dustin is all on board for it, but it does require, um, some volunteer help. Um, and I, and I think that's starting, we talked about youth council, go ahead, tell your parents, come to school, help with food rescue.
Yeah.
Um, but in compost kind of lives in that space too. So as we're talking about sort of that, that space, um, food rescue, compost, dusting, recycling, um, Tim. I think, that's right, that's was my guidance.
Alright.
Thank you.
This has been going on too, because, um, some of our civics emails that we received, I, I know I did last year from students, was that it's really hard to access the recycling bins and stuff during the school day. Um, so a lot of those kids were, that was like eighth grade project?
I mean, they're physically taped off at the Galvin, so they're inaccessible. Yeah, they're completely inaccessible.
I think they're accessible now.
Oh, are they?
Okay.
I think they're accessible now. Cause I think Tim changed that.
Okay, recently?
I believe so. I'll check with him.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think I was told Thursday or Friday, you, you could, you were in the meeting, weren't you?
Um, at youth council?
Yeah.
Yes. Um, I know William Boswell too, I think he's the, um, like president of the recycling club at the high school. He said that they tried to do, uh, food like rescue, where like if you bought lunch and then there's like excess food that you didn't eat and it was still wrapped, like you could put it in a box. But I think that was unsuccessful, he mentioned at the meeting, and that people would just kind of throw trash in there and other items like that. So I think it's a mix of like a lack of time since lunch is so short and also a lack of like caring and also education. Um, and I know we also talked about how the elementary schools do like composting and things like that. And then the middle school is kind of like, we're not really sure if we're using those recycling bins or not. So I think just being consistent from the schools would be, um, helpful, like if they start at elementary and like doing recycling and then taking those same, you know, programs and then moving them up, um, I think that would be helpful.
Brilliant. That's why you had the table. That makes all the sense in the world. If we could find some sort of consistency in symbols and colors and whatever that started in elementary, move through middle, move through high, that would be.
That'd be great.
Yeah. Didn't mean to go off on a tangent, that was great.
No.
Thank you.
Always welcome. So I'm, I'm the liaison for the environmental sustainability committee and, um, forgot what I was gonna say, but. Well, I missed last week's meeting, cause I was at the toy swap, I saw you. Oh, they're looking for a stu-, I know now, they're actually looking for a student liaison for, to represent the Galvin Middle School and the high school. So I'm, I'm gonna see if the PTOs can put it in their newsletters. And Nathaniel's on there as a, as the, um.
Youth council.
Youth council member liaison. Then they're also looking for children's students, but it might be something they could all work together on. I'm sure the committee would be excited about that.
Yeah.
Um, they completed since our last meeting, the collection of the pumpkins, which I was told is a smashing success. So thank you to everyone who volunteered. And they're now working with the schools in the library to collect candy wrappers. So there are boxes at each of the schools and those will be picked up the week of Thanksgiving. So, which is next week, which is crazy.
Okay.
So that is the environmental sustainability committee, committee update. Are there any other liaison reports? No? Okay. Our next school committee meeting is in two weeks, on Tuesday, November 28th, again at 7:00. Are there any agenda items that anyone? Oh, yes.
I was, I was noticing, I, I should have commented in the minutes portion, but, um, I think the last time we met, I was asking about the apps that, that students use now. Not necessarily how we're using them now, but, um, but what the, what the use case is, how the educators sort of, cause I think we're using ST math and things like, um, Lexia as measurement tools. Um, and so sometimes, um, I think parents are having trouble making the connection between the app and the usability in the class. And I'd like to help them make that connection, if we could. Talk to some of the, the teachers, talk about the apps, what, what they find so useful about it, I think it would help.
I think we can do that.
Great.
So who would that be? And at what level?
Well, ST math we have through, um, fifth grade. And then Lexia was more prevalent at the elementary in the pa-, in the past. Um, Lexia Power Up is you, being used at, um, the middle school level to really help students who maybe are lacking in some areas of foundational skill, get really targeted instruction. Um, so it's a nice supplemental resource, um, that we're using at the middle school. Um, but I could, I could bring some curriculum coordinators or coaches or teachers, whatever. Or I could report whatever.
I think, I think specifically sort of, um, we see it from the user end.
Yeah.
I would love to know sort of the, the value that the teachers see in it and how it's helping their, their targeted instruction.
We have ST math champions at every building.
I've met a couple.
Teachers who take that on. If, uh, Gigi could make an appearance. Yeah, so, um, sure, happy to pull that together.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, if you have, if you think it's something, you can just send an email to Doug or myself. Does anyone have any closing comments?
I do. Just, um, so the, today was the second annual We Are Woodville celebration. And I like to talk about this because it's, um, it's, uh, the elementary school my kids went to Woodville or go to, um, is such a, it's probably one of the more culturally diverse schools in, in town. Um, and it's amazing. Um, and it, it ties in with like, even on Halloween, we had a lot of like new families coming to our door. And they weren't always, um, like, English as their first language, there's new families, it's multicultural, it's like. So sharing, um, sort of where you come from with all of your friends is such an awesome endeavor. Um, and they're doing that really well, sort of next door at the Woodville. Um, and it's, it's fun to see how many people come, how many people wanna share and how the kids enjoy, um, interacting with each other. It was like a, a folk dance that, um, that two kids were doing. I knew the one kid was from the family who brought this folk dance, but I'm like, how does this other kid already know the dance? Like, oh, well, they come over and like, we do the dance on occasion and so it's, it's just, it's just like blending of all of our, our cultures. So I'm gonna run down a quick list of countries that were represented, if you don't mind.
No.
So it was, uh, Colombia, Canada, um, and, and Mr. Carter, the principal, set up a hockey net and had people shooting hockey. Um, yeah. Uh, Nigeria, Morocco, India, Albania, Germany, Dominican Republic, Morocco, Mexico, China, the Netherlands, um, and Vermont and Nevada. And then, and then they were.
I would guess your team.
The country of Vermont?
Yeah, yeah.
Is that yours?
Uh, yes, it was. Um, and then there was a lion dance, there was a Dominican and publican poem that was read by a student. Um, there was an Indian folk dance, there was a Tibetan dance. Um, and then there was a, um, an Irish step dance group at the end. It was just this amazing sort of blending. Um, and it's, it's awesome to see. We talked about sort of empathy and awareness of, of other, um, viewpoints. And the earlier it starts, the better. And, and these kids just seeing each other and celebrating each other in this space and what makes them each unique, um, is awesome. So I think it really ties into sort of our core values, um, across the district. And, uh, starting it young is fantastic.
So there'll be pictures probably on the PTO page and videos, I assume?
Yeah, it'll probably be right up in the.
Oh, good. You missed most of it because of the meeting.
I would, yeah, it was the lion dance, that was really.
I'm sure Mr. Carter will be willing to come visit and talk about.
Yeah.
I think he's coming to our community Zoom right after Thanksgiving.
Oh, is he?
Mr. Carter? Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll get the ratings up, yeah.
Anybody, any other comments? Go ahead, go.
Yeah, um, I know that, uh, Dr. Lyons recognized the soccer team and volleyball team, but just because I'm an old track coach, just wanted to recognize that the girls division two B won, uh, their bracket. So they placed first, so they're moving on to the Allstate Championship, um, this weekend, and the boys placed third in division, uh, division two as well.
Great.
So I'd show that on the back.
So say that again, the girls cross country.
The girls won their division, they placed first in division two B, and then the boys placed third.
So do they go on to another?
They go to Allstate, which is the following, uh, which is this Saturday or Sunday, I have to look, it's either Saturday or Sunday. I'm at Fort Devon, is that where?
Nice. Could have them in too.
Yeah, no, it'd be great to have them, absolutely.
Any other comments? We can't end this, we're like, someone else.
I'll, I'll add a comment.
Those can save it till the next meeting. Uh, Tuesday, December 5th, at 7:00 PM at the Galvin, uh, there's an opportunity to hear from a, a dad who lost his 13-year-old son to suicide. And so, uh, he's gonna talk to parents about kind of some of the signs about, um, just how to help, um, you know, look and, um, you know, be aware of things going on with your own kids. Um, he will also be coming to speak to some, uh, Galvin students on the next day, on the 6th as well. And so there is some information on social media, I know the district's social media page shared some information on it as well. And the, um, positive culture, uh, school culture team at the Galvin, uh, helped, uh, come up with this, uh, with this speaker. So I have not seen him speak before, but I, I hear he's a pretty powerful speaker. So that's definitely something that if you have, um, middle school students, you don't wanna miss it. And even maybe some, uh, you know, fourth grade parents may wanna come and see what he has to say.
Do you know what age is he speaking to at the Galvin?
Uh, he's speaking to all grades.
Oh, all grades, okay.
He'll have two different sessions on the morning of the, uh, December 6th.
Thank you.
I think parent university is in two weeks.
Screenagers, yeah.
Screenagers.
Yep, that's November 28th, 25th or, I'm screwing up the date, I don't have it in front of me. It's on our parent university, um, website, but that is coming up after.
Similar for sort of that same kind of demographic. Um, yeah, feeding into that. Oh, and, uh, and thank you to Metco for, uh, organizing the Ruby Bridges Walk to School Day today, which seemed like it was a huge success in all of the schools, all the elementary kids.
Wearing purple.
Yep.
So, yeah, no, it was a great day, it was a great day.
So Screenagers under the influence is November 28th at 6:30, and that's an in-person event at the Savings Bank Theater.
Vanessa, you can also, if you have closing comments, you're welcome to share as well. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but any other time that you're here.
Thank you, I, I don't have anything.
Okay. Okay, do we have a motion?
We do.
Unless you have anything else.
Uh, I'd probably say no.
Okay.
I can always see something else, but I won't. Um, move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, November 14th, 2023, second.
A motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor? None opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.